About you and little to do about us. We're a needy people and you're an amazing God. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Mr. President, to lead us in such hands. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a few addendums. We're gonna get those out of the way. Tax collector and tax assessor, are y'all here?
Yes.
Do y'all wanna give us a rundown of what we wanted to talk about?
Madam President, number fifty-four.
Someone asked if we could go at the beginning.
I'm sorry, number fifty-five.
Number fifty-five.
It's always there.
Okay, let me get to fifty-five. And then y'all can get back to your offices. I just, he's gonna do them first, then I'll do the addendum, just to let them get back to work. Is that okay? Yeah, let's do that first. All right, so it would be fifty-five that we're referring to, everyone.
Good. Tax Assessor's office, do you have six twelve F's?
I have it.
Madam President.
You gotta take it off the table first.
Yeah, you gotta vote on it.
Do we have a motion to take it off the table?
A motion.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And then fifty-six.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And then fifty-six adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, on tax parcel number zero-six-one-two-F-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-one-dash-oh-oh-one for two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two taxes erroneous and thus void of ab initio for related purposes.
Okay, Bob? Take off the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Yep.
Okay.
Did we just do fifty-six or?
That was fifty-six.
Took it off the table. Well, now you have to adjudicate. We took it off the table, which is fifty-five. Fifty-six is the actual action.
No, we're taking actual action on fifty-six.
Okay.
So we need the explanation. This is the one that put the minds of the board where it said an error in pricing, and I didn't know what that meant, so we tabled it so they could come explain it. I have talked with Robert in the interim. I do believe it qualifies, but I'll let him explain the error. It was a computer error in the assessment.
It was, it was priced incorrectly in the computer. When one layer of the error was removed, it caused the price to skyrocket. And so it went to a tax sale with the excessive value on it.
For twenty-one and twenty-two.
For twenty-one and twenty-two.
So that is an error in assessment that qualifies to be set aside. And if you don't mind the board, all of, all you're doing is basically that when you set it aside, void of ab initio and the taxpayer does not have to pay the interest and penalties that normally would be assessed in a tax sale. So that's, when it's an error on behalf of the county, that allows you to set it aside so that the tax purchaser or taxpayer are not penalized.
So, here in the board now, if it sets adjudicating such action, I so move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Fifty-seven, what do you got?
Fifty-seven, that might be Sharon.
Oh, that's Sharon.
All right, fifty-seven, order taken off the table, adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, a tax parcel number zero-five-one-one-two-B-dash-oh-one-dash-oh-one-four-dash-oh-oh-four, twenty-two taxes as erroneous and thus void of ab initio.
Motion take off table.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Now, order adjudicating the tax sales. Do I have to read the whole thing again?
If you wanna, you can summarize it if you want.
Okay. Referring to number fifty-seven, a tax parcel number saying, zero-five-one-one-two-B-oh-one-oh-one-four-point-oh-oh-for-two-thousand-twenty-two taxes as erroneous and thus void of ab initio. Sharon, good morning.
I'll make the motion and then she can discuss it.
So, uh, motion?
Second. Discussion?
Okay. Um, this parcel, we, of course, our tax sale, uh, you have to have your taxes paid by Friday by five. And this one made it through the system. So we call Delta, we call Gov's, I mean, not Gov's, I'm sorry. We call all of our vendors and say, close down the sites. No one can pay anymore on the websites. Well, somehow or another, this one got through on Monday. I don't know how it happened, though, there, the, our vendor was working on it. But in the meantime, this person was able to make a payment with a card on one of our sites, and we had already started our tax sale. And it wasn't brought to my attention by the bookkeeper until later on in the day, so I didn't know anything about it. But the fact that they got through meant we accepted their payment and we took it, it shouldn't went to tax sale. So that's it.
It shouldn't have gone to.
Yes. He paid, he paid.
That would qualify us. It would be so sad.
Okay. Motion set aside.
All right, we all ready?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We already had a motion.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
We're in discussion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think they're actually going out of town with the reason.
Start to.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thanks.
Yeah. Little football players, hello.
They might, they might hire Jimbo Fisher. He'll work for free.
Just stop it, just stop it.
For seven point two million dollars, we're paying him. You can do it, Chris.
Do this addendum, reports to the board by board attorney regarding Gulf Coast Public Safety Feed the Needy Program and its advertising of county resources. We approved that on September twenty-second of this year. Mr. Hulman.
I think that's, actually, we researched it over the weekend. Oh, it was the last week, actually, when it came up. First off, this was brought up in July, which was when I remembered it being brought up. The panel was brought back on September twenty-second. I was in court, I wasn't here. So it, it was approved on the twenty-second. We found an AG's opinion. I'm not sure I like it, but that's what the AG's office says. And so the court, if you do this advertising county resources. And I think the board correctly ruled on September twenty-second. Even though I told the sheriff it was fine to proceed as we have it.
I mean, make sure I understand what you're saying, Tim. I read the act that the attorney, you know, the opinion, and it said we cannot do that.
This was, this, there were, there were two AG's opinions. I found the first one. Tricia found the second one. The first one said you could not donate to feed the needy.
Apparently, that's the one I read.
That's the one I sent. There was a second that said, the AG's office specifically said, while you could not donate, you could advertise county resources. And so they proved the same exact thing, advertising county resources. And then the second opinion, obviously, I sent to the board. The board had actually already approved it as advertising county resources on the twenty-second, which I was not here. I was in court that day, didn't attend the meeting. So, I, when the sheriff brought it up, I thought he was talking about back in July when we talked about it. We had this discussion about getting a local private deal. So it was my fault for, I didn't realize that twenty-second had occurred. Although, I would still ask to go look at it. Tricia, being as good as she is, what you found a second opinion after I found the one that said you couldn't.
So you're comfortable?
I'm comfortable.
With the way that.
If there's an AG's opinion, uh, I don't like it when they make an opinion saying it's illegal to do it this way, but it's okay to do it advertising county resources. That's what they said on this specific issue. So I think the board, the board has already approved it enough. They should stake it.
So no action needed?
No action needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And let's do this other addendum from the Circuit Clerk, order approving the following payments of claims. Doesn't really give me a total. You each have it, right?
We might.
Do you have any questions or?
Then make a motion that we pay, we approve the payment of claims listed A through F.
F. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Now, on this one, Tim, the order denying the appeal and affirming decision, do we wait till we get to that number or?
I think we're waiting.
Second Amendment.
We'll take it off the table.
Okay. Just tell me when we get to that number.
Okay.
All right. Number one, order.
Madam Chairman, I do want to include on the agenda today a quick discussion in reference to AMR's contract. As you might be aware of, AMR contract expires on December thirty-first. We will not be receiving any kind of RFP for services, ambulance services until mid-February. So we need to, the board needs to authorize Pam or whoever else to get with AMR and potentially negotiate at least an extension of that contract so we're not without ambulance services for a month or two.
Okay, so you wanna make a motion to extend?
I'm gonna make a motion to, to have, I can tell you, it months later he's made the pact since he's been involved in that, to get with, you know, to get with AMR. I'm sure there's provisions in there. I didn't read it, but to extend that contract. From month to month, maybe.
Right. They'll do it month to month or extend it to a certain amount of time, not only to get the RFP done, but once the RFP's done, you have to sign another contract with somebody. So it could be several months.
So there's gonna be some overlap there.
Right. So if they'll do it month to month, then that would be fine. If they won't do it month to month, I would authorize Pam to negotiate and Pat to negotiate an extension that will encompass both the RFP time and the new contract time.
That more confounded by, I was afraid we're gonna be without service for a month, possibly, or even more.
Second motion?
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Consent agenda, items numbered one through ten have been placed on the consent agenda. Same appearing to be routine, non-controversial matters on which all supervisors are likely to agree. Question?
Motion?
Second, and I did have a discussion. Under item three D, order designating any board to accept RFP. Under D, RFP for professional engineering services. What? For Mississippi Sound Coalition. I'd like to include, uh, on that committee, Gerald Bless, who is the Sound Coalition manager, and Keith Hurd, who is a Sound Coalition lobbyist and, and advisor on that, on the committee as well as the others we have on here.
Second motion?
Make sure those two are included on the committee.
Okay, so three D, adding Gerald Blessy and Keith Hurd to the committee for the Saver Sound Coalition.
For the, for the.
For the RFP.
RFP for engineering for Mississippi Sound.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Number eleven, order approving in-state travel reimbursement for the tax collector's office as listed. Motion?
Motion.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twelve, order spreading upon the minutes, personnel changes for the tax collector's office as listed as on file payroll and HR department. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirteen, order approving the purchase of thirty-one workstation copiers from Canon Solutions America for the tax collector in the Gulfport Courthouse office, Lexi Courthouse and Orange Herb offices. Per state contract eight-two-zero-zero-zero-six-seven-nine-zero-seven at the price of two thousand three hundred forty-five dollars per unit for a total price of seventy-two thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars to be paid out of account zero-zero-one-one-oh-four-nine-twenty and within their budget. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fourteen, order authorizing advertising for bids for a pump station for the Tradition Medical City. Advertisement is attached. The project is one hundred percent funded with grant funding for this purpose.
Motion?
Yeah, we like that.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifteen, order approving attached supplemental agreement number one and change order number three for Holden Earth Moving and Construction Company for the Veterans Boulevard Project, number D-E-C-D-zero-zero-two-four-twenty-seven-B, to extend water and sewer piping along the road project. Change order is an increase of four hundred and twenty-six thousand twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents and twenty-five additional days with cost of change order covered one hundred percent by grant funding for this purpose as recommended by Doug Ratley, State Agent.
Motion?
And Jeff Van Turner. Do we have a second? Discussion?
We're gonna have a groundbreaking on that, on the power station on Wednesday. Y'all wanna?
On Wednesday? What time?
Ten.
Ten. Definitely try, that's exciting, okay. Order approving change order number two with JW Pocket and Company, Inc. for Harrison County Multi-Department Facility, increasing the contingency funding available by one hundred and twenty-five thousand to cover costs related to communications cabling, data cabling, E-nine-one-one radio repeater and cabling, phone system, camera security and other data needs. Change will include up to five additional weeks of time to acquire and install all materials prior to completion of ceiling grid tiles and will include all described elements and overall building warranty recommended by Jeff Van Turner, accounting engineer, authorizing board president to execute the same. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
I drove my wife by that building yesterday.
It's beautiful.
And she was very impressed, which is a big statement.
Yay. All right.
It looks nice, it really does.
Any discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right. EMA, order approving the two thousand twenty-four Emergency Management Performance Grant Work Plan Application, Designating Matt Stratton, Director of EMA, the applicant agent, authorizing board president to execute all necessary documents. Again, this is a grant and it covers fifty percent of that cost. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Tax and Rent, order approving refund in the amount of fifty dollars to Annie Jones for cancellation of November fourth of this year rental of Youth or Keys concession payable from the proper account. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right. Nineteen, order concurring with the Planning Commission's decision to approve case file.
Madam President. Uh, zoning recommends concurring with the Planning Commission recommendations for cases nineteen through twenty-two and vote on the appeal hearing separately.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-three, order taking off the table the appeal filed by Tammy Warren of the Planning Commission's decision to approve case file for conditional use permit filed by Robert Hygrick for Four-Nineteen Development Group, LLC, requesting a conditional use permit to allow for eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight lot single-family residential subdivision to be known as Patriot Ridge, phases one through six on three hundred and thirty-two acres of land shown on the site plan. Modifications to approve subdivision plans require renewed conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. Property is currently zoned R-one, that's low-density residential. And the subject property is on Highway sixty-seven at Three Rivers Road. The address or tax parcel number is zero-zero-five-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-zero-two-point-zero-zero-zero. Have the motion?
Motion, that, we believe we typed it.
So we, we have a motion to take it off the table? Next second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Now we're gonna consider the appeal filed by Tammy Warren of the Planning Commission. Do I really need to read this?
No, you don't need to.
Thank you. I get paid by the minute, you know.
By the letter.
By the word, yeah, I like that better. Hello.
Hi. It's my understanding that the public hearing.
Just a minute. There's no, there's no time listed on here. Oh, are you okay as far as?
Yes, that was, it was tabled at the last meeting till today.
To make the decision.
To make the decision only.
I understand that, but is there a time?
No, there didn't even get a time. There was a time previously, all this is the reading of the ruling of the board.
Right, there's no public hearing today.
No public hearing.
I was just here to answer questions.
Oh, okay. I wasn't here, that's why.
Oh, that's right. You all weren't here. So we had a full hearing at ten-thirty last meeting.
Okay.
But all, most of the participating board tabled it for decision to the day only. So it's only a decision.
Just about the conditional use.
Right.
There, there were a lot of questions that we needed answered. And at this time, maybe Eric or Ken answer the questions about the landfill, the filling of the land and our county engineer to answer those questions that we had at the last meeting. Do you remember all of it?
I wouldn't allow any, Mark Michael, I wouldn't allow any. If the board has questions, fine, but I wouldn't allow any more testimony because you've already had that.
Right.
Now, this is, this is just the questions that we, that they had as far as the, the people that were.
Yes, so.
If you have a specific question, I can definitely answer it.
Okay.
If I can, I'm sure Jack can.
One of the questions was, um, the area of that is zoned and how it's zoned and why it's zoned undevelopable or something like that.
I do think Michael can assist with that if the board desires to hear from him, not argument, just.
Answer those questions.
I think they're, they're talking about the restricted development. Right.
Restricted.
Right, so, um, I can answer that question, Tim? Yes?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, yes, it is restricted growth, but, but as we pointed out in the comprehensive plan, if you have water and sewer to the area and there is water there already, sewer is planned through the HC UA that it does allow this type of residential development at this density level.
There was a, um, question about whether or not that was a landfill at one time for rubbish.
Right. As far as I've been able to determine, um, as was pointed out at the hearing that we had, um, it was not permitted for any type of disposal other than, um, I guess you call it, not rubbish necessarily, it was just for trees and organic materials, that sort of thing. And anything that's there that's in the, the area that will have to be dug out, you know, and then they'll have to be filled broad in and they'll have to be compaction test and soil borings and all those things that are required through engineering.
That, that's the responsibility of the owner of the property or the developer of the property.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, because there will be, there can be no building upon any type of landfill or anything like that. So I, I'm not saying there is a landfill there. I'm saying, though, that if there were trees buried or something during the clearing process, then it would have to be dug out.
And Eric, I think you can add to that. You went to, you went back on Google Earth to two thousand and four.
It did not appear that there was any substantial backfilling of the property after the property owner had, had dug out the dirt over the years.
Okay, so it wasn't.
Yeah, there's always, there's always gonna be some minor, minor things, stuff generated on site that they, they may bury or leave, leave uncovered on the site. But it did not appear that they had brought in a large-scale rubbish-type operation to cover things up. And regardless of what's there, whatever is there has to be, it is our, our responsibility as the owner or the developer to remove that, to prepare the site.
Okay, and, um, there was, uh, some concern about the Gulf turtle, but you have to have a study.
Correct. We have to engage environmental specialists to come in and do the, uh, the work that's required to the Mississippi Wildlife and Fisheries. They have to do those surveys and do what's required to either, if they find something, then they have to re, do relocation operations. But, uh, all of that is something we'll have to do directly through the Mississippi Wildlife and Fisheries in protecting species.
Are there any other questions concerning the site? If not, uh, could you read the conditions? Conditional of the conditional use?
Yes. My understanding is the board is.
If you say it now.
Has considered, I'm sorry, my understanding, the board has had the last words of the voice made today. My understanding that the conditional use permit will be considered to be granted subject to the developer-owner complying with the following conditions. A, the developer of the subdivision will construct the following proposed amenities: swimming pool, clubhouse, entrance with monumentation with water features that complete the same as in the first phase of the development. And B, the developer will be responsible for contracting for the maintenance and operation of all common areas including the mountainous, amenities, landscape and entryways and water features. The developer will create a homeowner association that will take over the responsibility for the operation and maintenance of these common areas after construction. However, the developer shall continue to be responsible for the operation and maintenance of such common areas for three years after the last home is built in the final phase of the development.[1500.61] Developer will be responsible training all HOA board members and employees to handle these duties and responsibilities. C.
Excuse me, Tim, are you reading from the one that, just make sure. Here's the first page.
I'll read from yours just to make sure.
Yep.
We did make some changes, you got those as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we were at the spot.
See, the developer will maintain a thirty-foot vegetative buffer zone on the entire eastern boundary of the, of the development with a rear setback of at least twenty feet and constructed fence on the common boundary with all commercial developments to be constructed along Free River Road. I thought there was a fifty-foot, a total of fifty feet.
There is a total of fifty feet.
That bad is.
Go back to the one I had.
Okay.
The developer will maintain, we start again, see, the developer will maintain a thirty-foot vegetative buffer zone on the entire eastern boundary of the development with a rear setback of at least twenty feet or a total of fifty feet and construct a fence on the common boundary with all commercial development to be constructed along the Free River Road on adjacent property. And, as represented by the applicant, the developer will vary the architecture of prospective model homes to be constructed within several phases of development of the subdivision according to the diverse products offered by the developer and similar developments, so there will be no cookie cutter design of a single type of architecture there again. Such conditions will be incorporated and enforced in any building permits issued by the county. The developer will be required to adhere to all timelines for construction, this is E, I'm sorry. Developer will be required to adhere to all timelines for construction of subdivision infrastructure and department of county zoning and subdivision ordinances. Developer will have five years to construct the homes in the various phases of development of subdivision after the approval and recording of the final plat. In the event, the developer seeks an extension of the conditional use after five years pursuant to the terms provided in section fourteen oh four point oh five, point oh five, the developer must show there is an ongoing progress towards substantial completion of subdivision or development subject to state federal jurisdiction approval to obtain the extension of the conditional use. The developer will be required to comply with all zoning development codes in effect at that time, so everybody understands, if the codes change between year one to year five, then the future construction will have to be brought up to date to comply with current codes that are in effect at that time.
You should put that in everything.
The develop. The developer will be required to come back before the planning commission and/or the board supervisors for approval of the development of a multifamily project in adjacent R2 zone. So the developer failed to comply with the conditions set forth here above, planning commission and/or the board supervisors may cancel the conditional use permit and the developer shall cease any and all development authorized thereby. That's basically the total of the conditions, so.
Does the engineer have any additions? County engineer.
Jackie.
Jackie.
Anything to add?
No, I don't think he's got it all.
There's only one thing that I saw, Tim, this is in the.
Hold on, everybody just relax, please.
Don't open the door.
Sit down.
Not open the door.
Sit down, please.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sit down, everyone, stay still, please. Who knows, I'm no fool. You sound like the, the, the.
At least y'all have it.
I'm ready. When they came, when they closed the door, that's when I. What happened? They hit it?
He hit the glass wall in the rocks. Which is not even the glass wall there y'all did many years ago. It's close before and they used to clear and go straight out the front door. So y'all built the glass wall.
So someone was running and they hit the glass?
Yeah, they tried to jump.
Yeah, y'all stayed in here.
Because they were pushing to be taken in the customer's ears.
Right. We have a safe room in the corner. I was getting ready to go Monday, I was ready. All right, let's move on. All right, there's still this discussion.
Can you speak up?
Can I speak up?
Can you speak up?
Oh, can y'all speak up, please, they're just curious who that we're talking about.
Now, there was a correct, the order was, there was an error in the order that I read, so I gotta correct that. Paragraph E, it said, however, the developer shall continue to be responsible for the operation and maintenance of such common areas for three years after the amenities and common areas of the subdivision are built and approved.
Right.
It, it didn't have the same language.
We, we agreed to these conditions.
Yeah, the order I read said after the last home is built in the final phase of the development.
Right.
The order should have said after amenities and common areas of the subdivision are built and approved.
Right.
Only changes.
Right.
Someone can't forget all of, this is better and clearer.
Yes.
Let me hold that for a minute, I mean.
Okay.
And when you cut the part where it says at least last, until the la, la, uh, three years after the last home is built.
So on, on that, the reason why we made it clear was based upon when the amenities are built, but continuation is, the responsibility is gonna be, you know, after the swimming pool and the clubhouse and all that is three years after that. Typically, as you know, it's turned over to the homeowners' association, but you wanted to be sure that it was three years after those things were done, so we tracked that language exactly.
I did wanna make it sure after the last home in the development was built.
Well, so, the, the problem with that is, if you think about it, is you're talking about taking the timeframe, let's say the last, uh, phase is not built for five years, so now you're talking about three years after that date, and you, you don't impose that condition upon anyone.
Not anyone has eight hundred and seventy.
I know, I, I understand that, but we are agreeing to go ahead and do it for three years as opposed to what your typical one-year warranty period would be.
Well, I don't think, I think the question is whether it runs from after the last home is built in the final phases of the development or whether it's three years after.
The amenities are.
Amenities and common areas of the subdivision are built and approved.
Right, and so, you know, I don't know of any other subdivision that you require them to go ahead and be on the hook, so to speak, for that long after, because this is gonna be a multi-phase development now. You know, if you're talking about the first phase, then yes, but the last home is built, think about that, that could be as long as ten, twelve years from this date.
And all it's saying, Matt, I mean, this has been a problem for the board in the past, is the HOAs either don't function properly or don't operate properly. And so, then we get all the homeowners of eight hundred sixty-eight lots coming in to the board complaining about the common areas not being maintained. And I think what the board is saying, as I understand it, with, with this many lots, that the developer's gonna be responsible, if the HOA is not functioning properly in maintaining the common areas, then the developer's gonna have to be responsible until the last home is built. That way, you know, it clearly then becomes an issue of the HOA, once, once the last home is built, the HOA is responsible, it has to function. But, but until then, you know, the county should not be getting complaints, the board should not be getting complaints from homeowners about the lack of maintenance of common areas, uh, while the developer's still out there building homes, making money.
Right.
So I think that's all it's saying, if the HOA is functioning, this, then you're only guaranteeing that if they're not functioning, you're gonna do it.
And that, and if I may, I'm not, you're not on the hook, so to say, because we've never had a development come in at, at this, this size with commercial and other amenities, so we don't wanna mess it up.
I understand.
And we have fear from other, other neighbors that that could happen. And with the stipulations that we have, this will, this will help the situation. Plus, we, we, as you said, we don't wanna hear it. I mean, and they go to zoning, it ties up personnel, it costs money, it looks terrible, and.
Well, ultimately, it puts the responsibility of the developer and makes it that HOA is functioning properly.
Right, in this case, as you know, uh, written in there, we have to contract to make sure it's done, so during the time that it first starts, the, um, developer will be what I call deficit financing. In other words, they'll be providing the funding to make sure that these common areas are maintained. They'll have to, because they don't turn over the, the development until after they've, uh, sometimes built out as much as seventy-five percent, in some cases a hundred percent. So they don't turn over the development until the last homes are built out anyway. But I, I get what you're saying is you wanna have that responsibility, but typically it's an HOA responsibility to make sure it's done.
It is, and it is in this case, unless the HOA is not doing it, the board's saying the developer's gonna be responsible either she sells the last home.
I know, but in this case, you know, we have this in phase developments, and all those amenities and, and, and common areas are all gonna have to be built out. It says in the very first paragraph, the first phase, so.
Then it behooves the developer to make sure the HOA is functioning properly. As long as it's doing its job, the developer's not gonna be caught. It's only if HOA is not doing its job, the developer. But the problem is for the board, is if they're not doing their job, they, they're coming to the board complaining about.
Taking away time and money and personnel we don't have.
I understand, and, and you're not gonna be responsible for common areas anyway, because you're only responsible for infrastructure that's in the public right.
But if voters don't know that, when they call us twenty times a day, we have a hundred messages on one development, it becomes a burden.
Yes, somebody wants to.
Yeah.
We're gonna agree to that.
Okay, we'll accept it.
So it stands as I originally read.
Okay.
It's on the record, and with that.
Any further discussion?
I made permission, that way you can prove it with the conditions.
Okay, we have a motion, give us a second.
Say some motion, the motion is for an order denying the appeal and affirming the decision of the planning commission with conditions or, and approving a zoning map amendment involved by Heinrich and Associates on behalf of four one nine Development Group LLC for a three hundred and thirteen acre parcel of land on the west side of Highway sixty-seven, the east side of Beavers Road. Of the subject property is currently owned by R1, and the rest of it, that's basically the motion.
And that will be the developer, four nineteen.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion, give us a second.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, did you wanna say something?
Well, I mean, we filed the appeal, and we had a court reporter here the last meeting because there was records and there was testimony.
Right, that was the hearing.
We didn't realize that today, that not one, but two from their side would get up and give you the description and the definition of the, uh, uh, first question you asked. He gave y'all his basis for the definition of restricted growth. We gave you a definition of that whenever we gave our testimony, and we advised that the group that put that together did it because it was wetlands and because of an active dirt pit. So if he gets up and explains to the board, the governor of our county, his definition of what restricted growth is, and there was one question asked about it.
There was a question asked and answered.
And he answered it, I asked the question.
Well, D.R. Horton has never been named in any of this. You're saying four nineteen, you're giving them a loophole, because what's gonna end up happening is they're gonna sell that property, they're gonna say, we don't own that property anymore, D.R. Horton owned it, then they're not, their name isn't on that.
That's why it says developer, whoever, the conditional use permit is issued with these conditions, no matter who the developer is, if they don't comply with the, the conditions, the restrictions of the conditional use permit, the conditional use permit will be.
I totally understand where you're at on it, and I understand where they're at on it, but my, I think through this whole process, from the zoning all the way up to here, we as citizens and individuals do not deal with this every day, they do. There needs to be a definition of what a developer is in the county, because it's being used both ways, and you had a discussion with them at two meetings ago about that exact issue, because they're representing both sides. They're saying, we represent four nineteen development because they own the property. Then they're saying, we represent Horton because they're gonna buy the property and they're gonna develop it. So we need to figure out what the definition is and who's actually going to be doing what they're saying they're gonna be doing, because we're gonna have to live with it. And we're gonna have to deal with all these vehicles and all, every bit of traffic and everything else that's not taken care of over there whenever it's built. And it's eleven hundred and fifty-something homes, not eight hundred and eighty. Go look at the Patriot Vintage deal that we put in there, that they put in, and it was done in December twenty-two, it wasn't done recently. It was done in December twenty-two because they didn't want you to know that they were gonna do eleven hundred and fifty-something homes. Now, I'm not testifying today, every bit of what I'm telling you is in that record. And I've got exactly what you said, Ms. Rocco, at the last meeting, and there was a discussion about the dirt pit and what was gonna be done with it. I've got the transcript right here. And that was not discussed.
Is it eleven fifty homes and not eight fifty?
It is limited to exactly what the order says, exactly.
Eight hundred and sixty-eight lots.
The limit, yeah.
On this, I think what you're talking about is a development that's not part of the subdivision.
Correct.
It's gonna be that.
I understand that, but that's not before the board today.
It's a whole nother hearing, a whole nother day.
I, I just, I, I feel like with these folks here, I have to say that.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to get into your business, I'm just telling you, you've got a lot of people that are very interested in this, and they're gonna have to deal with this, and the traffic is going to be absolutely freaking horrendous, and we're gonna have to deal with it day in, day out.
The traffic will be, uh, there'll be a traffic study, and there may be a light, there may be off types of things, we don't know what the highway department is gonna do.
If we don't wanna stifle development, if they put two hundred and fifty, three hundred homes over there, I, I think everybody in here would be happy with that. They, they would, they would say, do it, rock and roll. You're talking about three houses over three houses an acre. And that's another issue here, it says low-density development, low-density residential. Three homes, over three homes an acre is not low-density residential. It may be on some, I mean.
Yeah, okay, well.
We're not here.
I think, yeah, go ahead.
The hearing was last week.
I know.
At ten thirty.
I know.
But all of those issues were discussed. And so, today we were just trying to get to the order, we had to ask some questions, that's just because we made sure it was done the way we, the way the board wanted it done, so, you know.
I understand.
We're gonna point a vote on it.
I just, when I go to sleep at night.
I understand.
Yeah, thank you, Eric.
I drive Cal-Lorain Road every day, the city of Gulfport, and traffic just works every day, but that's part of growth.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-five. Order spreading upon.
Only big enough.
Eric. Yes, thank you. Nah, it never lies. All right, twenty-five, order spreading upon the minutes, the personal changes of the county administrator as listed on file with the payroll clerk and personnel HR department, motion?
Motion.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-six, order approving the claims listed to be paid from the tort account, motion?
Sure.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-seven, order concurring with the sheriff's department on employment as listed on file with the payroll clerk and HR department, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-eight, order spreading upon the minutes, the list of emergency low-quote and state contract orders issued by the purchasing department for the month of November two thousand twenty-three, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-nine, order authorizing advertisement for construction of Harrison County Fire Station number fifteen at Tradition in Biloxi, Mississippi, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Recognizing the sheriff's representative reporting on the number of persons currently housed in the Harrison County jail, good morning.
MDOC inmates, we have a hundred and seventy-seven, uh, inmates ready to go. Two, uh, parchments, thirty-nine, misdemeanors, we have eighty, juvenile's twenty-nine, females a hundred and four, and males five ninety-one, and depending on the sex of that, we'll have one extra.
The jumper.
Y'all do have him.
Y'all, it sounded like, whoa, 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 I think I did. All right, thirty-one, order approving the purchase of duty ammunition federal forfeiture number eight two zero zero six eight zero six five in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents from Precision Delta Corporation payable from account number zero two nine two fifteen six thirteen. Motion?
Just out here, discussion, does that ammunition deteriorate over a period of years that you have discarded or something like that?
Yeah, to a point it does, yes.
It does?
Yes.
So you're not buying more than you're gonna actually use, so you're not throwing stuff.
No.
I'll just carry.
Okay, good. All right, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-two, order approving the attached line transfers within the sheriff's budget for the Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy, motion?
Motion.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-three, order approving the low-quote purchase from First Choice Marine LLC in the amount of fifty-eight thousand six hundred sixteen dollars for the purchase and installation of two engines to be installed on marine patrol vessel, payable from zero two nine two fifteen nine eighteen, and authorize the county administrator to transfer funds from zero two nine two fifteen nine seventeen, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-four, order approving the low-quote purchase from Roger Dab Chevrolet in the amount of fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars for two thousand twenty-three Silverado fifteen hundred LT four-wheel-drive crew cab, payable from zero two nine two fifteen to nine fifteen rather, and authorizing the county administrator to transfer funds from zero two nine two fifteen nine seventeen, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Who is this for?
The sheriff's.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-five, order approving modification, number M dash one of grant agreement SWC number five sixty-three with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for the two thousand twenty-four annual Bring It Hostile Hazardous Waste Collection Event at Mississippi Powers Plant, Jack Watson, and Gulfport, and to end there later than December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, authorizing board president to execute the same, motion?
Motion.
Second, anyone? Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-six, order authorizing reimbursement of three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents to the bridge fund, account number one six zero 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 three six one, for signs at the new election commission office, payable from zero zero one one eighty-six thirty-nine, details attached, motion?
Motion.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-seven, order authorizing reimbursement of three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents to the road fund, number one five zero 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 three sixty, for equipment usage at the Fairgrounds Arena, payable from. for equipment usage at the Fairgrounds Arena payable from 001522581. Details attached. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-eight. Order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund 15000360 in the amount of $540 for civic center rentals for October of 2023 payable from 001510581. Details attached. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund. Wait, are we doing that one? Is that the civic center? Oh, yes. Thirty-nine. Order approving mileage reimbursement for the following employees. Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty. Order approving application process for flood mitigation assistance and building resilient infrastructure in communities grant programs with FEMA. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-one. Order approving total payment of $31,665.62 for the Harrison County School District for 2017 rental payments on 16th Section lands leased by Harrison County as listed and authorizing budget amendments for the same. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-two. Order approving closeout of Moran Road Bridge, project Number LSBP 2413 between Harrison County, Mississippi and Gulf Freeze Construction, Inc., authorizing board president to execute the same as recommended by Douglas Rackley, our state aid engineer. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-three. Order authorizing disposal of assets per attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-four. Resolution requesting the city of Biloxi's permission to use their wooden stage on December 2 of this year as per terms of the inter-local governmental cooperation agreement. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? What is this for? It's usually the opposite. They're usually asking us to do something.
We're asking them to use their stage. They have a wooden stage that they bring and they set up for the VA when they do the laying of the roofs.
Nice, okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-five. Order approving use of Harrison County employees during working hours on November 30 of 2023 and December 4, 2023 for pickup of the city of Biloxi's wooden stage for the laying of the Christmas wreath. There you go, I should have read that at the Biloxi National Cemetery. Motion.
Second.
I mean, motion? That's good, I know what you meant. Any further, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-six. Order authorizing the transfer from 001151641 to 001151901 in the amount of $3,700 for the purchase of a 10-by-12 LARP steel-framed shed in the Biloxi courthouse. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll go back there. It's a storage. They have to put in their equipment, their little lawn mowers and things like that that they can't...
So that's the place to put it. I didn't know that place around.
It's just a small area. And it won't have any windows.
Just for storage, yeah. All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-seven. Order approving claims docket from Mississippi Code of 1972, annotated section 191327. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-eight. Order approving payment of the following claims.
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
Okay, Marlon, I need to wipe up. Can I add one to that?
Yeah.
For the key impact strategies for their monthly service, the lobbyists.
All right, so the motion with the addition of Number 48, Key Impact Consulting fee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-nine.
President.
Yes.
I'd like the authority to post for possibly the position of payroll administrator. The reason possible is it may be an inner-office transfer to fill that position. But the payroll administrator may be moving to new charter clerk's administration. So we're just trying to plan ahead of time, get us plenty of time to train someone if that does occur. Am I saying it right?
No, I just, what form of motion, what wording?
Well...
That's something we have to...
Motion to allow for posting a job.
You and me have authority, if necessary, to post the position. I've already talked to Gigi. And it may be an inner bookkeeping transfer to take the position. If that doesn't happen, then we'll have the ability to post.
Okay. Do we need to do that in form of a motion?
You need authority to post for the position if necessary.
But that's funny, and I'm not sure exactly necessary. The hiring has to be approved whether or not you advertise for it. That's what we're talking about.
You always, don't we, Pam?
No, it's a...
Only one is a vacant.
It may be vacant.
But we just post, we don't request.
I think he's just asking for authority if it's necessary to post or advertise for a position.
Thank you, Tim. I went to Southern, you went to Ole Miss.
Motion. Do we even need to do a motion, though? I mean, if it's ever...
I think you just give them the authority to give the charter clerk authority to...
No, I understand. I should make sure we needed to vote on it. So we have a motion to authorize, in case if needed, to advertise for a position if it's...
If he wants it, I think he's...
Okay.
Well, I'm just trying to follow.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
You see that, I made the motion.
No.
I made the motion.
I went to Southern.
All those in favor...
I made the motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No, I'm just kidding. All right, motion carries. Okay. Forty-nine. Order approving the request of the city of DeAverville to provide funding support for a portion of the city's ARCA projects identified as the South Miami Bridge pump station, a new water main to be installed at I-10 in DeAverville Boulevard, authorizing board president to execute the sub-recipient grant award for related purposes.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty. Order approving the resolution requesting the Mississippi legislature to enact legislation designating county road department workers as first responders. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. I probably vote for this, but I don't know, Tim, and the discussions y'all have with it. Is there going to be other groups coming for the same thing?
I guess that allows them to get in the area after hurricanes. That's one of the only things that they're asking for.
Well...
Should we specify that in case of emergencies?
Again, I don't want to get... This is the legislature. They never listen on it. That's fine with me. However, you know, generally, you think of first responders as people on a daily basis dealing with emergencies. So the only time that the road department is doing any kind of situation like that is during after a storm. And they do go out there in dangerous situations, and I recognize that. Anyway, be prepared.
But are they trained? Are they going to be trained?
Well, well...
They already trained.
They'll have to be trained in federal.
So for, to be compliant with our FEMA grants, many of our first responders have to complete necessary training. Road department already participates in that training, and they are essential in many of our emergencies to do heavy work with equipment. That's what they...
Okay, so it's just doing what they do. In emergencies, basically.
Also may assist in reimbursement by FEMA, too, because they're active as first responders. They're more likely to include that in the FEMA reimbursement easier than in the road department. But, so, I would assume.
Or if they need to assist another county or...
And that's not, like I said, that's not... We're only supporting the resolution, but we're not doing it. It's up to the legislature.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-one. Order adjudicating and authorizing expenditures as listed as necessary to advertise and bring into favorable notice of opportunities, possibilities, resources, Harrison County, Mississippi, including all forms of advertising, including not limited to broadcast advertising, logo recognition, publicity collateral, other media, all broadcast print material and signage, including the link. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
Will you read that again?
Yeah, I know, right? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-two. Order approving up to 2,000 payable from 00210695 to be used for the community Christmas festival December 14 of this year at the Isaiah Fredericks Community Center. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-three. Order authorizing advertisement for proposals for renovation of the Future Diversion Center. Motion.
Motion.
Okay, discussion?
The only discussion, unfortunately, I couldn't make the meeting. Tim, did y'all, were you...
Let me tell you. I wasn't at the meeting because I was bad, sick that day. They wouldn't want me there. I would have expressed to them.
Yeah, we were...
Unable to attend in '12.
There's been a lot of issues about the lease. And the problem, the lease, we have the draft lease. We have the rate that's going to be the same as the hospitals. That has not been the issue. There are basically two issues, and I advised the board this about a month ago. And I did finally get a list. The board originally, there was a list created of renovations that were necessary, that were estimated to be 400,000.
That meets the criteria.
And the board, the board then authorized that that would be the board's contribution towards renovation. If the board remember, probably a month ago, even five or six weeks ago, the state went, came down and went through the building. At that point in time, the message came back from Pam Tricia that there were going to be a lot of other renovations. The ceilings are drop-down ceilings, and you can't have drop-down ceilings in a mental health facility because of the ligature risk, the hanging risk. There was also some discussion about other outdoor door hinges, but I'm not positive about that, that had to be changed out because of door hinges.
Door hinges.
Or handles.
The latch.
Right. That had to be changed out. And so the questions started being asked, well, how much is that going to cost? That sounds like an expensive proposition. Repeated requests were made to Pam Bell to say, okay, what is, what's the problem with cost of this? I never got the answer to that. We also have, there's still, we have four different drawings that have been provided for the area of the facility. They all seem to be different. And the one that Pam Bell has picked out, which if you've looked at the emails, is drawing number three. Well, the problem is, those four plans, the attorney for the hospital or the owner of the hospital sent me a diagram, and I tried to get them to go off of that one because that's what they provided me. That those four plans don't match up exactly. So when you try to take drawing number three and figure out exactly what... Because I can't figure, we don't know what square footage is without a drawing. Generally, we think what they're trying to leave. So after the controversy came up, so we, to this day, still don't know the exact diagram, although we're getting there. I talked to the attorney last week, or communicated with him.
Can I...
Do you want to table it?
No, I just want to make sure the board understands the lease is ready if the board's ready. We don't have, Mr. Nico sent me a new list Thursday or Friday that does have what, a more definite list of what needs to be added, but there's no idea of the cost. So they want to go ahead and on the agenda is to advertise for proposals. This is going to be in excess of $400,000 probably, so it needs to be bid. So I think the board should authorize today is to authorize bid specification to be prepared. Once those are prepared, that the board then issue bids, subject to, entered into a lease, obviously, but that would give the board some idea of the cost of this. Because if it's more than $400,000, where is that difference going to be made up? I can do a lease all day long, but without that answer...
That's been the problem. We start off with an estimate of three hundred and fifty thousand. That's the first one.
Three seventy-five, I think, was the.
Well, I think the original one was three fifty, if I'm not mistaken. Something like that. Then the next thing I know, it's four hundred and fifty thousand, and the board only knows what the actual cost. I mean, we bit into this apple, we're pretty well into it, we're going to have to see it through. I really do, I think we need that, but we need to lock down some prices, as you say, Tim.
Yeah, I think the only way, and everybody's upset because it gets kicked down the road. As an attorney, I can't answer these questions. I, I, the, the cost, the only way I know to get the probable cost is for the board to authorize an advertisement for bids.
And we've got to have specifications for that.
Right.
And Ken has provided a list, I can't draw those specifications. Maybe Jackie can help.
Well, what you got?
She's looking up, she's hiding back there in the back.
Can we just add into the motion once bid specifications are.
The mental health people, the state mental health people shouldn't know what's required for those type of facilities.
They're talking about the screws have to be changed.
I mean, I read an article, I think today, in reference to the jails and housing, you know, commitment.
Isn't there a specialist that has to come in and do that?
Do all that, they evaluate it, that you've got to meet certain criteria? I don't know why I saw this, but that facility.
The only thing maybe the board can do that, rather than advertise, is to hire an architect, let an architect go in and do the specifications, and then give us an estimate based on the specs, as an architect can do, or what they think the cost is. Then you can bid based on those specifications. But somebody's got to draw specifications. I, I know they're upset about getting kicked down the road, but I can't do that.
No, you shouldn't.
I don't think the board should enter into anything they don't know, we don't know what we're entering.
So the only way to, you're going to have to have somebody take.
Anything about knowing. We're going to, we're going to have that not, problem is, is that information we're getting has constantly changed, and the costs have changed. That's what I'm saying, we start with three fifty, I guarantee you now we have five hundred thousand.
We go directly to the mental health people in Jackson?
But we made the, yeah, they need to, somebody needs to make a decision. We made the commitment, they need to come up with what the specifications are for that facility.
The list Kent gave Friday first, or whatever day it was, you literally have to change out all the screws and the doors and everywhere. Because the screws are allowed, I guess, they screw it and use it as a hanging point or something. So, I mean, it's, I have no idea what the cost. So the board needs to either, I think probably the best thing to do would be to go ahead and do, authorize Pam to do a request proposal for an architect, or to provide plans and specs. And then they, the architect can then get with Pineville, mental health, and figure out exactly what needs to be done. But four hundred thousand dollars is, is fast going in that way and it's going north.
I agree, Tim, but it's unfortunate that now we're going to wind up paying not only that, but architectural fees for something that they should be able to get to us. And I know what you're saying. Now, we're, we're having to go out and hire architects.
I, I don't.
And we're leasing the building, so it should be the responsibility of the owner, correct?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I know you're.
No, 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 no.
Your rent will go up.
He's glad you did, but we're going to pay him for it, so what's the difference?
Yeah, your rent will go up substantially.
The rent's going to go up.
If they have to do it.
Keep in mind too, now, this is only a one-time expense, I'm not pronouncing it, but it is only a one-time expense. Then the lease will be yearly or some.
The lease will have a provision, and if they've agreed to this, that says that the board, the authority to cancel it if you don't have funding.
Right.
In other words, the legislature doesn't give the grants, and they've got two years of grants, the board's agreed to pay its.
Not the, not, make clear, not the funding for the lease. We're, we're paying the lease out of our general fund. We're paying for the lease. You mean if the diversion center itself, the grants, the financing, or pay for the diversion center loses its funding, or?
That's correct.
Then we would be, we'd be able to get out of the lease because the agency's not going to do us any good without them.
Right, now, the board does, you mentioned something a minute ago, you could have the option of saying to the owner, this is what we want done, how much will you charge per square foot rent in order to do it? And then you don't have to go through any bid process. In other words, the cost of the renovation, then you don't control how much you're spending on renovations.
I think we'd better to go out for the bids. I think it's better, rather than included in the lease cost.
How those square foot.
Maybe, I mean, I'm.
I, I, I mean, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but I think it would be, that if we go out for bid, we should get the better price.
I do think that at a minimum.
Jackie, you deal with this all the time. What, what do you, what do you think? Jackie deals with all that.
She's right.
I'm pretty definitely dealing with, she's had no health problems.
I'm talking about specs and all.
Just with the bid process, I, I tend to agree, what I know about this process with this building, which is not everything, the recommendation to go ahead and get an architect to specify it, or potentially require the state to provide a scope of work at that level where it's very clear what they expect to do, and that would make it easier to bid on this end. But I think that you need somebody who's specifically trained in building finishes, things like screws and finished ceilings, to be able to specify what it is that needs to be done, have the state approve that scope of work, and then go out for bids.
The mental health, state mental health people, I'm sure have built facilities.
Oh, yeah, they have a list.
So they know, they should, no, John? They haven't, they haven't gone through this?
What they do is, obviously, with the community services and treatment, they rely on these regimens, which is a, not a public entity, but they, they certify whatever they provide. For instance, CSUs have to be certified. Now, the diversion center, I think this is the second one in the state, so I'm not sure they have a lot of practice with this. Pineville has the money. Okay, they've, they've been awarded the grant.
That's right.
Okay? But my issue is, it looks like this is going to be, if I'm mistaken, this will be about a two million dollar operation for eight beds?
No, it's more than that.
No, it's more than that.
That's what I said, eight beds for police officers to be able to drop some money off.
More than that.
My experience is, when their beds are full, they turn people away. I don't know what you're going to do after eight beds. Because they told, have they told you what they're going to do?
Well, there's more to it. The diversion center, there's more to the diversion center than just a, a bed.
It's a single point of entry.
Yeah, that too.
They got the chairs. They can sit there in the chairs.
There's more to it. We're not just building another.
No, you're not. But this is a place for them to potentially, potentially be receiving voluntary treatment. Okay? Pineville facility. Anyway, I'm just trying to tell you, it's very, very confusing to me. I just hope it meets the standards and the goals that the police officers are needing and share.
Well, that's why they involved in it.
Well, it's eight beds, we got five cities in a big county. There'll be a lot of beds.
Well, are we going down? Are they going to be in addition to the sixteen that we have?
No, no, this is not involuntary treatment. This is somebody that needs help, that's homeless or whatever.
Okay.
A veteran that, that is having an issue. Police officer will be able to take them instead of riding around in their car figuring out where to go. So you hope that this meets the goals, and I think you need to have it in writing what their, what their goals are going to be.
I think, I think that's understood.
Well, what they do now with CSUs, they say, read the state regulations. I said, that's, that's, tell me what y'all are doing for Harrison County. Anyway.
All right, let's move forward.
Point is.
We, we into this, and I, I support it, I think our law enforcement, I very support the public. Where we have to go now, I don't know if it. I think, I think there's some limitations on those grants as far as time, too. They have to have, as far as the grants from, from mental health to, to, for the diversion center, there's a time frame. So we're out, if we don't get something done, that's a possibility, they'll lose those grants. So if, if hiring an architect is what would be the best way to go, let's do it.
Marla, can we also, and I'll make that motion, but if, and if we have a discussion, if we can get a second.
Okay, we have a motion to hire an architect.
Second.
Discussion, go ahead.
That is specific, that is a mental health architect.
Yeah, that is done.
Any architect.
The second, but under discussion, shouldn't we also ask them for what their goals and responsibilities?
We got all that, we had meetings galore.
Have we seen anything that's right or something?
No, we haven't seen.
Okay, you're not getting right.
But I guess we could go and ask them for that. I, I think our meetings have specified what the purpose of the diversion center is, what, all that.
It's not, I'm not going to be.
I, I'm just trying to get this thing done. I think it's critical that we get it done.
Yeah.
Okay? And I'm not a mental health expert, I don't know all that stuff, but I know we got problems. And, and they seem to think, and I think, single point of entry is a big thing, and that will be helpful. So if, if, Tim, if you feel that.
I think that's the only way to get it off dead.
To get it off.
They're very harping on the lease, they can't. The lease can be completed tomorrow, the board chooses, but you're going to have some open financial issues that the board has said it's not willing to meet at this point, if you don't know what they are.
That building's going to have to be, that building's going to have to be remodeled.
We have, we have a motion in a second to just go out for bids for an architect. That is just moving it forward. Everything else, we're talking about the lease and the terms, that can be separate.
Architects, I would recommend that the architect has that professional services contract, you don't have to go out for bids, you can get authorized Pam. Motion authorize Pam to request proposals from, I would say, two architects, so you have competing proposals as to how much it would cost to prepare the specification, plans and specification.
Did you get that word, Colleen, about professional services? Okay.
I'll help you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries fifty-four, order acknowledging receipt of and concurring with the proclamation by Governor Tate Reeves, declaring the following two days as legal holidays. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Oh, it's more than two, I'm sorry, two is it? All right, second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries, we already did fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight. No, not fifty-eight?
Yeah, we did.
We did, okay. Pam, do you have anything?
I just have, I noticed that Chuck's in the back, so he has said that he will be retiring at the end of this year.
No!
Those are a lot.
Chuck! Chuck, we got that trip planned. All right.
And Chuck, it looks like Wlix didn't show up, so I don't have to worry about the interview for the iPhone.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, that's sad, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? No, I'm glad you did. Got your letter?
No, I forgot everything.
I don't know.
That's all. Anyone?
Yeah, I just asked Marla if you had anything, you said no. End of this year. December thirty-first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
He will be sorely missed. So, guys, a chance? Okay. I don't have anything either.
I got one thing.
Okay.
Could we, uh, C.T. Switzer is not coming back to Harrison County, so we need to, I need to transmute him and put in Susan Hunt. He's.
What do you mean to Harrison County? I'm sorry, what?
Is that my permission?
For the Gulf Coast junior college.
Oh, into CCC?
And I.
Is that for effective January first? Shouldn't that be the new board?
No, it's, it's now, and then they can, because she's already run out, she's run out of.
When is this coming to expire?
T.C.T.'s? It expired a while back.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course. This was done, I wasn't there when this was taken. Apparently, C.T. Switzer, who has a motion to appoint several people to that commission, and they tabled that motion. And then they came back and appointed two of the commissioners. They never appointed C.T. to the commission. In that, his name never came.
Who, who never?
But he was sitting in place.
He's talking about reappointing, he's just. I would give a look, I think we're talking about one month.
I know, but I'm.
Position is for another, what, four, five years?
Five years.
Five-year position? You're like somebody.
I spoke to the incoming supervisor.
Do what?
I spoke to the incoming supervisor, and I asked him, because Susan Hunt lives in District Five. She did live in District One, and she was appointed a long time ago, five years ago, by, by.
One of each what?
No.
Beverly?
Beverly. Beverly is.
Is she on the board?
She's already on the board. I'm just going real pointer on District Five as opposed to District.
One.
One. It's complicated, everything I do.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying that these appointments, we should wait till beginning of the board to appoint people five-year.
Well, I, I, I started to think about that, but they got some things to do, but, but I thought about it, so I made contact with the incoming. So I wanted to appoint her, if I could get a second.
You've always put with the incoming supervisor, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor putting Susan. Do you want to discuss more?
I just, yeah, I just want to claim my vote, because I want to vote, because I think the new board should do it. And not against Susan, I know her and, oh, dearly, and I think she's well qualified, so I want that understood.
Okay. If I hadn't checked with him, I would say, yeah, but he, they're friends, they're good friends, they're very good friends.
Right, she's amazing.
Yeah, she is amazing.
And you have checked with him?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, first call him, I.
I'm texting him now to confirm, and then I'll make my vote.
Okay, if you, if you're sure to me that that's.
He's sick, he's got COVID.
All right. If you check with me, then.
You can check with me, I'm telling you.
No, it's.
You can check with me, I want to.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
I'm second to the motion, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. McAdams?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Holland?
Unfortunately, yes, we have a request for executive session to discuss the claim we received from an audible access involving Mr. Burleson. The, Mr. and Mrs. Burleson.